Push some things out of my garage into the shed. So I'm figuring eight by eight is just about what I need. But I'd like to push it back so that I don't have this thing virtually sitting in the middle of that strip of property that's called my backyard.
Very good. Any questions from the board, any comments? I had an opportunity to see your property yesterday. You got, as you said, a strip of land, a very short.
That's all there is.
Strip of land across the back. You put anything back there, it's going to be close and then blocking windows and everything else that are back there. So, yeah, I mean, I don't see any issues. Any other comments?
I would agree with that. There's... Side yards are typically deeper than your backyard is, so there's really no real estate other than where the applicant's suggesting.
Okay. Good. I'll open up to the public. If anybody wants to speak for or against this project, come on up. Bring it back to the board one last time. Any other comments or questions at the board? Nope? All right. I'd like to vote on Seeker or like to make a motion for a type two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section six one seven point five of the environmental code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody want to make a motion for the variance?
Do you want to run through findings?
Yep.
I don't know that the request is out of character with the neighborhood. There's a very few, but there are a couple of houses that seem to be positioned in the lot in this orientation such that the house is set back far from the road and right up against the rear property line and also a corner lot, which limits the real estate where you can put anything within that parcel. There's not a detriment to be created to nearby properties. The location that the applicant has requested is actually probably the most invisible to the rest of the neighborhood. It's going to be shielded by a fence along the roadside and then there's arboretis to the rear of it, so it's not going to be seen by anybody that's not within the backyard of the home. Achievable by any other method? I would say no, just given the unique orientation of the house on this lot. The request is substantial, but as the applicant has stated, the entire depth of his rear yard is 22 feet, so an eight-foot shed squared is quite small by shed standards. So I would call that one a tie. No adverse physical or environmental impacts to the neighborhood or to the site. The shed is just going to be sitting on top of the ground. It's not really going to interfere with anything. And in this case, I would say the difficulty is not self-created. The house was placed there many years before Mr. Hannett moved to that parcel, so...
Gotcha.
Anything, anyone would like to add to that?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay. Did you want me to do the motion?
I can do the motion. I'd like to make a motion for a area variance for a shed located at 217 Birch Lane to provide, to allow a two-foot set rear, two, yeah, two-foot rear setback associated with a 64 square feet and eight-foot by eight-foot utility shed on a parcel having SBL 063.14-1-49, located in R2 Single Family Residential District under section 35011, 35047 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Second. Am I doing the vote? I'm sorry. Where's my list of people? Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Spampanato?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo? Aye. Your motion carries.
You've been granted the two-foot rear setback for an eight-foot by eight-foot utility shed.
Thank you very much.
You have, you do have to obtain a building permit to be able to do that.
Right.
You have one year for substantial completion.
Right.
All right? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next on our agenda is 374 Thrushwood Lane.
Applicant Christine Harper is located in the R3 Single Family Residential District, requesting to allow a six-foot privacy fence in the front yard of her corner lot located home. Relevant sections of the code is 350-12, R3 Single Family Residential District, 350-12B5C, which requires a minimum rear yard of 50 feet, which... I'm sorry, that should say front. And then 35079B, which no fence in excess of four feet in height shall be erected in the front setback of any residential lot. So...
So we, there's actually currently a four-foot fence around the property, so the variance we're asking for is to put a six-foot fence, replace the fence that's currently there with a six-foot privacy fence. We're on the corner lot, so although it states according to the town zoning laws that that's a front yard, it's actually our backyard that we're asking to fence in. Our pool is actually on that side too, which we had a variance approved for to put on that side. So we're looking to, it's actually a very busy street with the school that's on the other side. All of our neighbors will be grateful for it. We have three dogs, my grandsons over all the time, and there's just a lot of traffic and there's really no privacy in the backyard. So although it's considered a front yard, it is indeed our backyard. So I'm actually, we're asking for a variance to replace the current fence, to replace it with a six-foot privacy fence on that side.
What is the distance of the four-foot fence from the property line?
I apologize, I don't have, I did have that with me. I don't have that with me. I had it in the drawing.
Twenty feet. Right now, I'm guessing, just based on the survey map.
Twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty, twenty-five, in that range. Yep. Josh, there is a area variance for the four-foot fence setback?
Four-foot fences are allowed in the front yard?
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You also, I drove by the property. I, again, it's, it's the kicker of having a corner lot.
Yeah.
It's not your backyard, it's the, you have two front yards, unfortunately.
Right.
You did, you put up a, a vine screen, for lack of a better term.
A lattice.
A lattice, which was put up to help with, with privacy, I'm assuming to the pool and whatnot. I don't, I get it. I don't have any, I don't have any over, overly big concerns of it. I don't know, anybody else from the board? Anybody had a chance to drive by it or anything?
The location of the fence is not going to be an impact on line of sight. It's far enough back from both the DeWitt roadside and from Thrushwood Lane as you're coming around that corner. And we've had several variances for similar situations within, I'll call it the DeWitt, West Webster area of town. The lots are not incredibly large and when there's a corner lot, your backyard is open to everybody that drives by. And there's a lot more traffic on DeWitt than there was even five or 10 years ago, so...
Are you planning on leaving the lattice up when the fence is installed?
The lattice that's on the side of DeWitt Road is actually in a flowerbed, so we have growing flowers that come up on it, so that one would. There's one on the other side that also has like a clematis. It's more of a, the clematis and the roses climb up it, so for visit, I mean, it's, yeah, it looks nice, but if you, if you wanted me to take it down, I would, but it's because we have flowerbeds there and the flowers grow up the lattice.
Okay. Any other conversations, questions from the board?
No, I'd say it's well-maintained. I don't have a problem. It's going anywhere, existing fences already, anyway.
All right. Anybody want to speak for or against this, the fence? No? Bring it back to the board. Any other comments from the board? Then I'd like to make a motion for a type two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section six one seven point five, of the environmental code. Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Findings? This request, not out of, out of character of the neighborhood, the fence that is being selected will fit within the neighborhood itself. Looking at the property, the fence is not really going to be, it is further forward than the front of the house, but it's not further forward than its neighboring houses or vegetation. It's not going to be, it's not going to create a detriment to nearby properties in any way. There's currently a fence there. It's just going to be a larger fence. It's further back, it's the same distance back from the road, so it's not going to cause any sightline issues in the neighborhood. Provide privacy, there really is no other means, no other method to be able to provide privacy and provide a usable backyard. That is the downside of having a corner lot. I do not see that this is a substantial request as the fence is, a four-foot fence is coming down and a six-foot fence is going up in its place. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Difficulty is not self-created, it is a corner lot. It's, this is, and the request, again, is not significant. Does anybody else want to add anything?
Thank you, Gavin.
Okay. Like to make a motion for a area variance for a six-foot fence to be located at the same location of the existing four-foot fence at 374 Thrushwood Lane in the front yard of a corner lot on a 0.41 acre parcel having SBL 063.14-2-68, located in R3 Single Family Residential District under sections 350-12, 350-79, and 350-101 of the Code of the Town of Webster. Second.
All right. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Spampanato?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo? Aye. Your motion passes.
All right. You have, you have to get a building permit. You have one year for substantial completion.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next up, 1186.
Property address 1186 Ridge Road, applicant Enzo Aquino. We have the representing agent as Christina Aquino and also Al LaRue. It's in the zoning district of the MC Medium Intensity Commercial District. Their request is a use variance to allow auto sales to an existing vehicle service business. Relevant sections of the code is section 350-18 and 350-101D2A, which is the requirements of a use variance.
Good evening. Al LaRue, McMahon LaRue Associates. I'm here tonight with Christina Aquino, one of the owners of the property, and Yumani Jorin, the present building business owner of VIP Motorsports, the leasing. Both are available to answer any questions you might have of them. This parcel is 1.35 acres in the MC zone, as stated. The garage has existed for about 70 years on that, on that parcel. The owners acquired the parcel in 2007. It was granted a use variance in 2016 for sales. They operated on the site pretty nicely until 2018, when they decided it was getting too small for them and they didn't want to expand it, so they, they moved to another location. Since then, four tenants have signed leases, the latest being Yumani at VIP Motorsports. Three previous tenants failed to make lease payments, and so they're, they're no longer associated with that, with the property. The present tenant, Yumani, has indicated the need for sales to make this property viable. Three others couldn't make it without it, and he thinks, he thinks it's a very important part of, of what his business could be and to make this a very viable site. We've provided extensive financial analysis for your review that demonstrates our hardship. In summary, history tells us that sales is necessary to make this site financially viable, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Just one small correction for the record. We were not granted a use variance for sales in 2018, 2016. We were, we requested a change of use, change of tenant application, so it was not a formal use variance, so.
I stand corrected.
And you own that property from 2007 to 2019 without sales?
No. We have owned the property from 2007 until the current day. In 2018, in 2016, we made a change of tenant, change of use application because we relocated from 941 Ridge Road to 1186. We stayed there for two years successfully. We then purchased a property in Ontario where we relocated our family business.
And three other businesses after haven't made it since?
Well, it's a little bit more finesse than that. The one, the first tenant who went in there was one of our tenants at another property in Ontario, and that was Limelight Automotive. And it was the intention when Limelight went in on a five-year lease, as history tells us, that they were supposed to be doing sales and auto repair. And we helped them prepare their application to New York State for that, but that never came to fruition. However, they did stay there successfully. They were able to utilize the, the use variance that was granted by this board for Penske as a rental company, so they were able to make rent, but they were not able to pay the increments per year in the lease over the course of five years. And so now we sit with a $6,000 deficiency on that five-year lease. Now, I don't know if, pardon me, if it's so much that that coincides, his leaving the property with COVID, because everybody suffered at that point, but we had a terrible time getting the next tenant in. The next tenant who came in was Bridge Road Auto, and they only stayed there for a year. The next tenant after that was P&amp;T Auto, and they had an awful time, and they left after two months.
Were they startup companies?
No, they were not startup, not to the best that they assured me. You know, very nice people, but they didn't survive. And that's not to say that car sales is a panacea for survival in the automotive industry. God knows that, you know, I'm married to a mechanic and I can tell you as an expert witness in that regard that it isn't. I mean, you know, over the course of COVID, car sales suffered greatly, but I don't think it can hurt when you're running an automotive service station like traditionally has been run there, to be able to augment income with some modicum of sales, five, six, you know, not a blown-out Marina, you know, something down the road, but something that helps pay the rent. Penske helped pay the rent, but then our tenant left with Penske and went across the street. So now we don't have that to offer. I don't have that to offer. And I am the person standing here before you today because I'm the person trying to rent these things. My husband runs a very big automotive store, a shop rather, out in Ontario. He's super busy. We have 30 properties at this level now between, you know, Monroe and Wayne County. So it's my, it falls on me, and I'm the person responsible for compliance with, you know, the town. And I am having a hell of a time renting this thing because people call and their first question is, can we sell cars there? And my, my answer is, well, traditionally you have been able to, but you're going to have to go to the town. And people get intimidated by that, or they go and they do due diligence, and the right answer from you, I presume, is, it's not zoned for that. But I found one person who was patient enough to say, listen, let's ask them if they would zone it for that, because it's been zoned for that previously. Let's go back and see if we can't ask them again. So now I have somebody willing to work with me on that.
How long has he been there with his company? I can't see him. Sorry, man. How long have you been there?
And that property?
Yes.
Since March. In business for five years.
And you moved your business to there?
Yeah, just because it's on the main road. It's a beautiful building, and I feel like it will bring, it will help us grow.
Was your intention moving there, so you have a automotive repair shop, correct?
Yes.
Was the intention to, to sell cars there? Or that's just a kind of a cherry on top type thing?
We do need the auto sales in order to make it there. I'm paying a lot more for rent, and without auto sales, it's just a matter of months before we're pretty much have to move because we wouldn't survive there. Definitely is needed at least a few sales here and there a month in order to make it, especially with the amount of employees we have in the operations.
How many vehicles for sale do you anticipate being on the lot at any one time?
Mostly right now it's just auto repairs that we do, but auto sales, I plan on having, you know, five, six, but I don't anticipate having like balloons and signs all over the place. I've been selling cars before, and I'm well-known just so on social media, Facebook Marketplace, stuff like that. Very successful with that. I don't, I don't plan on going all crazy like a big dealership.
Can you go back to the, either the aerial or the, yeah, where would you propose that you would be parking the sale cars?
So on the left side, usually I plan on putting the repair vehicles, and on the right side, closer to the road, have a few there for auto sales, which is closer to the road. But I sell like higher-end stuff, very nice vehicles. Most of the cars that come for repair are, you know, not as nice, so I try to keep them on the side where they're not like exposed to the main road. All my high-end stuff, I keep it on the front end, which it looks nice, and we have grown a lot, you know, having nice vehicles there.
Your vehicles that you have there now, I drive by there a lot. You got a lot with no plates?
Yeah. We do service a lot of small dealers in the area. We have the inspection machine and...
You're supposed to have plates on your vehicles, on private property, right?
No.
Well, actually, sir, let me, if I may, because I've been through this with my husband with the, with Town of Ontario.
Okay.
So when you're, it is zoned for auto body, and that's what we're approved for, and there is an exemption in the New York State zoning. I know there's a big compendium of the New York State zoning rules and laws that when you have an auto body repair shop, you are permitted to have not infinite amount of unlicensed vehicles, but you are permitted to have a number of unlicensed vehicles on the lot. So, you know, that's kind of a thing that we reach with the Town of Ontario as well. But I want to also bring back...
Just give me a quick question.
Yeah.
You said that, correct me if I'm wrong, you said this property was once so zoned. Is that true?
So zoned?
Sale, car sales.
Here's the thing.
Well, let's just start with that.
I don't, I don't know if it was zoned per se, because the law, if you look at the statute, the statute goes back to, if you look in the, in the code, the code says that the HC and MC district supplement the CA automotive code that was in place in 1969. So I'm assuming at some point, because neither the HC nor the MC district in the, in the ordinances permit or prohibit car sales.
Well, they don't permit it.
They don't, but it's not articulated, car sales in HC, car sales in MC.
It's articulated in the fact that it lists the, the uses that are allowed only. It does not list anything other than what is allowed.
Right. So it's a, by omission, I suppose. I mean, it doesn't say it, it doesn't not say it. All I can say is, when we bought the property, we had no idea to know that this property was not zoned for auto sales because it had been going on there for so many years.
And then with, with respect to the rental trucks, the Penske?
Yes.
Was that a permitted use or was there some type of...
A use variance was filed by one of our tenants in 2009.
Yeah, and we were unable to find any record of that in Town Hall.
Well, my, my, he went before, he went three or four times before the board and, and it was accepted, and we've been parking Penske there for, since 2008. And, you know, we've, we've been permitted there for a long time.
When Limelight, the tenant that the applicant is speaking of, moved across the street to their current location, that is the first time the town became aware of the Penske rental operation. They approached us for a sign permit indicating truck rentals, and at that time, we told them that it would not be in allowed use without a use variance. So Limelight did opt to get a use variance for their automotive accessory business for their current location, but Penske was not part of it.
So if, if they had applied in their former location, is it a fair assumption that they would have been approved then? They're just simply on the other side of the street, likewise restricted from that without the, without the variance or the permit?
You're referring to the subject property or...
Yes. In other words, you're saying that there came a point in time where the Penske rental was approved on the opposite side of the street?
No.
No.
Okay, I misunderstood.
We have no record of an approval of the Penske truck rental at this location.
That part I get.
And it only came to our attention that that was a component of the business when Limelight approached us for a sign permit.
Right.
And they had went through, they had just gone through a use variance to get their core business located there. So I said, you know, we indicated that we were unaware of this other component, and that would also require a use variance. So the applicant at that time opted to get rid of the Penske truck rental operation rather than pursue a variance.
And if I recall correctly, with the applicant across the street for Limelight, one of the conditions of them being allowed to have their business across the street with all of the variances that they got there was that there would be no auto sales from that location.
Correct. That's what I recall too.
So...
Right.
Well, he's not a, he's not a New York State, he's not a licensed dealer or a licensed auto repair professional, so it's a distinction without a difference, I would think. He's not licensed. He has never been.
Other questions from the board?
I don't know that it's for the applicant. I think it's more for our attorney. Can we limit the areas in which cars could be parked, this property? Because it seemed like there was, one of the neighbors had concern about cars being parked in the back.
Well, certainly, but as a threshold issue, the board has to get by the financial hardship first. So...
Actually, I do. So you, March is when you signed your lease of 2025?
Is that, I'm sorry, right?
Yeah, it was in March twenty twenty-five.
So between March, and you knew then that it wasn't, when you signed your lease, you were aware that you were not allowed at that point in time to sell cars? You could just work on your vehicles, right?
Yes.
So between March and I do believe it was June was the initial meeting that got pushed back, you realized that covering rent costs and employee costs and anything, it was, it was very difficult. So within, what is that, four months' time? You realized pretty much right away that it wasn't gonna work unless you're able to sell cars?
Yeah, actually, I'm down two guys. I had to let go of two guys just because we couldn't afford to, uh, the payroll.
Okay, so currently you're just not bringing in enough business for, uh, like mechanic wise to, to work on the vehicles. So you're trying to offset the downtime of not being able to work on cars with some potential car sales? Because there's no guarantee you'll sell a car. You're obviously anticipating that you will, but there's nothing stopping people from looking elsewhere. I mean hypothetically, obviously. So how many cars do you plan on, and, and I forgive me for not, if it's in here, how many cars are you anticipating turning over in a month for sale?
Um, if I could sell anywhere from four to six cars, I'll be good. I also wholesale a lot out of state. So most of the time it goes from one auction to the other one. They just at the lot for two or three days between transportation. But for actual retail, four to six will be sufficient for me, um, in the size of operations we have right now.
And, and when you're wholesaling, you're talking about some of these cars that don't have plates on them for other dealers?
Uh, we, we service five other dealers in Webster. So a lot of their cars, when they buy from auction, they drop it off. We service them detail, inspection, and then they go back to their lot. Sometimes I sit there for quite a bit waiting on parts. But yeah, we do service a lot of, uh, of other dealers, so it's, it's not our vehicles.
Are you gonna lose those accounts now that you're becoming competition?
No, no. I, I have my special niche of, of vehicles that I sell. None of them are, are doing what I'm doing.
Have, uh...
Josh, the... Trying not to make this application somewhat mixed up. So the nuts and bolts of this is, is that the owner of the property is the applicant for the use variance. The tenant is really merely here as a demonstrative piece of evidence as to the difficulty in making the rent at that location without the supplement of auto sales. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, a tenant in, in a building is not the appropriate party to make an applicant, application for a use variance. Because then that would run with the land, of course, the tenant could leave and, you know, the landlord is, is the, is the party that it's gotta be annexed to, right? So...
Yes.
So in, in this application, typically you would see, as we do in all use variances, that the building is not capable of a reasonable return from any of the other allowable zoning uses. Correct?
That would be a correct statement.
Have we had scenarios where either on a multi-use facility or a single use facility, buy a tenant who's not acting as an agent for the owner, someone that is gonna be buying the building per se, make an application for a use variance?
Uh, we did recently have one, a couple of months ago, I believe the Best Buy Auto Sales.
Right, we, then we found out after the fact that he had a contract to buy the building, right?
Correct.
Miss, you know, that, that's not the case here, right? This is just with respect to the tenancy.
And for the reason that you just stated, I thought it, you know, my husband and I thought it was appropriate to, for us to make the application because it runs with the land, right?
One hundred percent, but, but my, what I'm trying to say here is that, and, and we have this challenge every time we get a, a use variance. Okay, so this is not unique to, to your application. So, so the, the statute in the case law basically says, hey, look, you, you have to be able to demonstrate. And sometimes, you know, there's everything from, you know, veterinarian places, the barber shops, the restaurants, that you've got to demonstrate that the property can't provide a reasonable return based upon the allowable uses. So what we've seen, what we've heard tonight is that its use as an automobile
Sales.
facility, if you will, can't make the not, whether it be a repair shop, collision shop, unless you can have this adjunct sales component.
Well, I just want to clarify that...
Is that a fair statement?
It's half fair.
Okay.
Because there's...
Half that's not fair.
My husband and I put evidence in the record that, um, we tried on multiple occasions to advertise it, MC District Restaurant, Laundromat.
Okay, where, where is, can you just show, show me where that is in the tab?
I know it hasn't, hasn't...
I may have passed over it.
It hasn't been stated tonight, but...
Exhibit nineteen.
Tab nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, hold on one, let me catch up to the other.
It's not just at nineteen, it's, um...
So this is a Craigslist posting.
It's in several different places, actually. And, uh, tab fifteen has other examples.
Thirteen, fifteen, and...
So, so let me, let me ask that again on this issue. Does the various variance application, can it be strictly applicable to rent and opposed to sale? In other words, have we historically had applicants demonstrate to us both? Can't sell it for what they need to get a reasonable return, which we've seen in almost every simple application. But is the inability to rent for an allowable use also evidence that we, that we should be seeing?
And, yes.
It would seem to make sense, right?
Yes.
Okay, I can't think of one offhand.
Right, but yes, demonstrating efforts to market it for permitted uses and showing...
For sale and...
For sale and for rent?
Well, I mean, e- either or, or both.
Yeah, either or.
Okay. So Ms. Quino, let, let's just concentrate. Now, I, I don't want to go any longer than we need to on this. On the rental part, right? Because that, that's really the thrust. We're, you have tried to sell the property, you're not interested in selling the property. Correct, we're talking about rent only?
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I want to be honest here. I mean, there have been opportunities or not opportunities, but times when we have tried, five years ago, to sell the property. So I'm not gonna stand here tonight and tell you we've never tried to sell it.
So, all right.
Yes, we've tried.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to swear under or deposition, okay? I'm just saying, we're trying to see in the four corners of the application tonight. And it sounds like tonight, it's based upon rent. That's where you're saying the financial hardship exists. You can't rent it, correct?
Right, and our ROI is negative nine point nine one percent of the rent, right?
Rent only, not sale tonight?
Right.
Okay. And on the rental issue, on tab nineteen, we see a single document that it was on Craigslist at some point in time. I'm not sure if there's a date on here.
Eight months ago.
Okay, eight months ago.
That was the last advertisement. So I took you through all the, all the times we advertised it and the three.
So if tonight this board felt that they didn't have enough information to say yea or nay,
Right.
would you be able to put together some quantum of proof in terms of historically your inability to rent it at the number you need to rent it at to break even, given, uh, your basis?
Well, I, I thought that, yep, you know, our statement was clear that our last rent in twenty twelve, when we rented it to a company called My Mechanic, was fifty-four hundred dollars. Since that time, since twenty twelve, here we are in twenty twenty-five, we haven't been able to get up above a hundred dollars beyond that.
Okay.
All right, now...
So let, let, let me just stop you. So fifty-four hundred, let's call it fifty-five hundred, so that's sick, what's that, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, right? Grocery receipts?
Well, I think there's a table that I...
Or maybe a little, a little more, sixty, sixty-five? And what's, and what's the debt service on it?
The annual or...
Annual.
Annual is, um, it's twelve thousand, six hundred and change at three percent.
Forty, right? So that's a delta of maybe seventy thousand dollars a year that you're upside down.
Well, I computed that since we purchased the property, our carrying cost, well, no, since the relevant time period from when we left the property, that our carrying costs are about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Right, you're bringing in about seventy.
No, when you say that, I mean, I, I'm, I'm married to the record here because I computed everything pursuant to the leases.
You said it was fifty-five hundred a month at its peak, right?
Yes, but it depends which, which tenant you're talking about. Because for Limelight, it was fifty-four hundred, then it was supposed to be fifty, fifty-four, fifty, then fifty-five hundred, then all the way up to fifty-six hundred, and we never got there, right?
So what, what, what are you currently...
So now we're back down to fifty-five hundred.
Okay, so my, my point is, it's sixty thousand dollars a year against a hundred and forty thousand, that's eighty thousand dollars upside down in your debt service. Yes?
Sixty-four, eight hundred, to be precise, yes. Yes.
And if you have car sales on the property, what is your anticipated rent going to be able to reach?
Well, you know, I think that's asking me to be hypothetical. At this juncture, I'm not even asking a reach point, I'm asking a survival...
The board may ask you to provide that information, that I'm trying to help you.
Well, no, no, understand that, but I mean, I don't, I don't want to speculate. I don't want to sit here and say ten thousand dollars. That's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking to have a solid tenant survive so that we can increase the rent. It's the market rate...
I know what you're looking for, but, but the board, the board has to meet certain criteria.
Yes.
Okay?
I think what we, Alaru, I think what we did was we, uh, we did a quick calculation, it was quick. Seventy-five hundred a month?
I, i- is that, is that a guess or is that based on something?
It was based on some, some information, but it...
Okay, that information, okay, so let, let me just put it out there, okay? If you had some type of market analysis, okay, that says, look, this many square feet with a auto mechanic shop and the sales of car can mend a X amount per square foot or ten thousand, whatever that is, right? So let's say it ends up being nine thousand dollars. So the difference between a hundred thousand and a hundred and forty thousand in debt service is a forty thousand dollar hardship. Now, now the board has a number that it, that it can vote on.
Right.
I'm just, I'm trying to narrow it down to the issues.
I guess I misunderstood the assignment. I thought the assignment was for us to show you what we've lost thus far.
Right, that's part of it.
Right.
But, but, but the other piece is for the board to be able to determine why a new use outside of the allowable uses can get you where you want to go.
And respectfully, I want to say to this board that I'm being absolutely transparent with you. I would, if you gave us a hundred dollars more than what we're earning now so that I don't have to keep searching for a tenant to so, solidify and stay, that's where we're at. That they can't survive there. And I can't, I can't just fabricate a number, I don't know.
I'm not asking you to fabricate.
Right.
But what, what we gotta try to protect against, and again, we do this with every use variance,
Right.
is two months from now, someone else is having terrible luck with selling their property or operating a business and they want to go to something else that isn't allowed.
Right.
And the first thing they're gonna say, hey, Ms. Aquino was here last week, she didn't show you this, this, and this, and you gave it to her.
Right.
Why are you making that, so I'm just trying to make sure that the board can see the level of hardship and they can make a decision.
And I think, um, in your statement that you gave to the board, you estimated what your sales could be per month. And I think that's the best metric of an increase.
The other piece of it, I, I think, um, what was being relayed is if you, if, if you were able to present market, um, market share valuation of, you know, the building is X amount of square feet, it has two or three lifts. If, um, just a repair shop rents for fifty-five hundred dollars, but a repair shop with sales is able to rent for, again, you know, using the, the previous example, nine thousand dollars. That ends up showing us that level of hardship as well.
Right.
Which we don't have here, right? I mean, the, the onus is on you to be able to do that analysis to come back and say, look, you know, here's these three automotive shops within the Town of Webster that, you know, that are renting it out for X, and this is what they're getting. Because the other side of it is, if it's a, if it's a bad investment, why should we change the use if it is? I'm not saying it is, but if it is, why should we change the use to, to make it, uh, solvent?
Okay.
So to let us help you, if you would give us the best objective evidence that you have on that and it establishes that hardship, then the board can determine whether it's, you know, significant enough to change, to change the use.
Right, as long as you can tell us tonight that we've satisfied at least demonstrating to you that we, we've shown a loss, we've shown a loss on one side, right? What you're looking for is to show you how we can improve on the flip side, I'm presuming, right?
I think there's also, oh, sorry.
Um, the information that you've provided gives us an excellent synopsis of, of what your losses have been
Right.
since you started leasing the property. But there's nothing that tells, so, so even if we allow the use of sales, you're still bringing in the same amount of income, so you're still losing something, but you've got a tenant that's staying all the time. So that what we're missing is the piece that says that sales increases the cash in your pocket based on what the applicant, or what the...
The ability to charge a higher rent.
Right, right.
Right, and so for that proof, you would need us to demonstrate what a similarly situated auto repair, uh, vehicle sale place rents for down the street or wherever they're allowed.
You're gonna go out and find comps of places that are just like what you have right now, and what they rent? And then similar size of building and land that operate selling and doing auto repair and say, okay, doing what we do now, they get fifty-five hundred too. But these people over here that I found that are similar size, like you're not gonna go to comparable, Marina Dodge, I'm making that up, right? You gotta find little, you know, smaller car sale places like that and show us that they're getting ten thousand dollars a month. Therefore, like he said, that you're, you're losing out on forty-five hundred dollars a month just on the basic fact that you can't do both at your location.
Well, I hes- I hesitated to use ourselves as a comparator because I have my husband's book of registry. And I was thinking, you know, we were thinking, shouldn't we show them what we earned here selling cars? Shouldn't we show them what we did per month selling cars? And our, our conclusion was that we didn't want this tonight to be about us making more money.
It's not about how many, you could sell seven thousand cars out of that thing a month. It's about the fact that you are missing out on getting ten thousand. He's selling the cars, he's gonna make the money.
No, I understand.
Because I own property, so I get it. So like, what you're missing out on is getting somebody like him that's gonna make a boatload of money and say, I'm never leaving here. I can sell cars, make a boatload of money. She's making a boatload of money and we're making a boatload of money together. But you can't do that by showing us just the fact that you, you gotta sell cars. We gotta know what your rent is going to be or projected at, if you're able to do that. Because if you're not, your rent is fifty-four hundred bucks based on what you're able to do. That's what you're getting for what you got. But if you're able to sell cars, your rent's ten thousand, but you gotta show us, I don't know, I'll make it up, five places, right? Like when I go to do comps for my, my clients for houses, I say, oh, you're buying a twenty-six hundred square foot house. At least twenty-six hundred square foot houses over here are selling for this. But they put forty thousand dollar kitchens in. That's why they sold for five hundred thousand and these ones are selling for four fifty. So that's what we're looking for. We already know what you're getting for rent is this. Show us what you could get for rent if he's able to sell cars.
And that's also part of the, respectfully, of this application is that we feel like we're uniquely positioned in this town here. Because who else am I gonna compare with? Limelight's not a... because who else am I gonna compare with? Limelight's not a car dealer.
There's a bunch of little, like the, what's the place on the corner of Regent and Five Mile? He's a, he would be a comp, what's he pay for rent? I mean, those are things you gotta ask and look around and see what people are getting there. We rent over in the village, we own a hair salon, suites. There was a gentleman that was selling car, doing exactly what he's doing, but he was able to sell some cars. You know, I don't know what his rent was, but, you know, that would be something to just at least come to us and say, this guy over here is paying ten thousand dollars a month, this guy's paying, you know, eight, this one's paying, you know, thirteen thousand. And, and there's a discrepancy when you're upping these numbers compared to fifty-four hundred. So now, like, they're saying, we have something to go about. People that are selling cars are paying a substantial more amount of rent, which is your only concern, you want rent money.
I want stability. You know, I, I, sometimes I say to my tenants, you know what, okay, you can't, you can't afford that, just stay here and be good. And don't give me a problem, you know, and that's a modicum of it as well.
We cross our fingers as investors that people aren't gonna leave.
I think that's where I'm missing something here too, in terms, I can understand the question about how much they're gonna make in profit, but what I heard from the very beginning is they couldn't rent the space and they want a tenant that's gonna be able to stay there. And in order to enable them to stay there, and they're still making money even at fifty-four hundred dollars, they may not be making as much as they could, could be, but they're making a hell of a lot more that way than they would be if the place was empty. And I think that that's what they're looking for is stability.
Well, and it sounds like the applicant has stated that unless he's able to sell cars at that location, he can't afford to stay there as well.
I think that's been true of the last three.
Which you do have that historical basis that the last three you've had have-
So the other question that, that I would have, right, I mean, MC District allows a plethora of other, um, uses. The three ads that you have posted in Craigslist, um, you know, and the oldest one was three years, the most recent one was eight months ago, and the other one was kinda in the middle of those two. The most recent one was for an automotive repair shop, listed the number of lifts, et cetera. The other two were, one was multi-use commercial. So I, I guess my other question, have you attempted to market it? I mean, this might be just a bad location for automotive repair. Uh, I'm not saying it is or not, but it, it just might be.
I think it's an iconic, it's been there since nineteen fifty, I mean, it's an iconic. And, you know, the, the problem that inherently that you have, when you go back to whether it's a bad investment, no. I mean, there's seven bays, there's lifts, there's very expensive equipment in there. Any car person who goes in there knows the value of what it is, we're just trying to amplify that. So my homework, I have a homework assignment then, yes? I, I have to give you comparat- comparators of similarly situated-
I'd like to know what they're renting for, people that work, that are similar size in stature. What are they paying for rent in order to be able to work on cars and sell cars? That's the real difference to prove a hardship. Again, and I, I mean, not in a disrespectful, we're landlords, right? So our only concern is that he can cover the rent. If he makes three hundred thousand dollars in the month of November selling cars, you're only getting ten grand still, or whatever you're charging him for rent, it makes no difference how much money he's making.
No, understood, but to get to that point, it has to be-
But we gotta know what those places are renting for in order to say, alright, she's got a point, right? Like, she's missing out on five grand a month.
But I'm also wondering if, if I could also use our own sales experience there, is that appropriate?
How long ago was that?
Um, it ended in twenty eighteen.
Were you, you were selling cars on this property?
Right. We had, pursuant to a change of use, change of tenant, we applied for sales, it was approved. And, and we sold there for two years, it's in the record, and, um-
Josh, do we have, does the town have record of that?
We do.
Okay.
It was an administrative, uh, change of use that was issued in error or against the code.
Gotcha, okay.
But it was issued.
Okay, very good. So, yes, I think you have, uh, two, two homework items. One is the comparables that we talked about. The other component that, um, I know for me that I need to see is, and I don't know how you're gonna show it, is that this property doesn't work as, uh, as the other uses are, the other uses that are allowed within, within the property. Those are the two things that we need to be able to, you know, in addition to what you've already provided, which is substantial, those are the other things that we need to understand as well.
So how do you show that? They, they have tried to market it as retail space unsuccessfully and tried to market it as automotive space. So how do you, how do you prove that any of the allowable uses won't work there? Um, look, do you look at other retail-
I've worked with developers that have taken churches and converted them into restaurants, I've worked with developers, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's done, uh, I don't do the, I don't, I don't know how they went and did their market research to determine that, hey, you know, instead of a church or instead of an automotive shop, we're gonna convert it into, you know, a restaurant or appliance sales or, you know, whatever the other lists are in there.
Do you, do you look at other, like, empty retail shops in that area?
Respectfully, I mean, we've already put eight hundred thousand or more, almost nine hundred thousand dollars into, when we bought the property, had no idea to think that we could never use it for repair or sales, that's what it is. It's always been that. I mean, it's since nineteen fifty, it's been automotive, that's what it is. It's not, we're not gonna turn it, spend a million dollars and turn it into a restaurant. That's for the investor, the person who wants to rent it can do that, you know?
Please, we're, we're not here saying no.
Right.
We're trying to get the, the documentation so we can say yes, is what we're trying to do.
No, I, I, and I appreciate that, but I'm not, when you, I mean, I've got a dozen ads here, you know, can be auto repair or retail, restaurants, two-story, you know, I've, I've fished it out as that opportunity.
I think your best bet honestly is the hardship of showing the fact that you're missing out on substantial amount of rent that you could be charging him if he is allowed, based on the building, right?
Yeah.
To sell cars. I think it, how many cars you sell, to, in my opinion, is irrelevant because if you're not selling the cars, whoever rents from you is, right? So it's just a marketing ploy for you to get a tenant in there that is hopefully going to stay longer because they are allowed to sell cars. So I think the main concern that if I, if I was you, I would come back here saying, I, I am missing out on seventy thousand dollars a year in income just because my tenants are not allowed to sell cars. That's really, at the end of the day, the, the number of cars that come and go out of there, I, in my opinion, is a little irrelevant. It's more what you're missing out on as, as the owner of that property, not being able to market said property with, um, being able to sell cars. Cause you're clearly having an issue trying to do it any other way. And anybody that comes in there doing what this gentleman is doing is clearly having a hard time making ends meet.
Right, so, and I, I can do that for this board, I can do that easily, I can do it.
So I would just like to clarify for the applicants here. So we're not just saying the same thing over and over again. What we're asked, what the board is looking for is essentially an, a, just a market analysis of the money you're, that is not coming in due to not having sales. That's what they're asking you to show, is that correct from the board?
That's, that's half of it.
And the comparison between what a leasable space, comparable leasable space-
That's permitted in the district.
A comparable leasable, or rentable space that is able to sell cars versus this, this property that is not able to sell cars. So that's one component, and then also the, uh-
Permitted uses.
The other uses.
The permitted uses, okay, great.
And what about since he's taken over, since March?
What do you mean?
Since he's leasing that since March of twenty-five. To show, I mean, numbers that, for hardship, this is why we're moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, for me, I got, I think this by here shows-
Well, is he not being able, I think you're asking, like, is he having a hard time covering the rent?
Right now.
Is it fifty-four, he's only giving her three, like, since then, you know, I think that's what you're asking, right?
Like, that'll show a hardship, right?
Yep, yeah.
Well, thank you, I've taken enough of your time tonight.
Is it clear, the, the assignment, the homework?
I get it.
Okay.
You will also receive-
It's some of the information that I wanted to give you, but I was hesitant because I didn't want this to be about us, I wanted it to be about the loss.
I will say this, as a town member, I, I want our properties to be, you know, used, I don't want them vacant either, right? I mean, I, I want, again, that's why we have a standard we have to maintain.
Yep.
We're asking you to help us maintain that information.
You don't have to ask, I get it.
Appreciate it. So I guess we're gonna, um, table this matter, I mean, till next month.
Just October.
Yeah, what, do you have the date for?
It's October fourteenth, it looks like.
Okay.
Just one thing, is, is there anybody here that came to speak tonight? Should we open it up for them or no? Just in case they're here and they came on.
That's fine. That's it, at one, thanks.
How you guys doing?
Good.
So I run two successful businesses four point eight miles away.
Your name, your name?
Name, address?
David Hoffman, and I'm at sixty-two sixty Lincoln Road and sixty-three seventy-eight Dean Parkway. I inquired about this location back in March for a third location. I have a auto sales dealership and a repair facility in two different spots. And I inquired about this, I called the town and they told me it could not be used for auto sales, so therefore we did not pursue with it. As far as rent, I pay a substantially amount more than what he is charging at my facility for auto sales and auto repair. So when they told me the price, that's when I inquired about sales and they told me it could not be done, uh, because it was not zoned for that.
You're the perfect person for the applicant to get an affidavit from.
Right.
And I did give him a letter, you know, because, you know, I, I did inquire about it, it's been empty for some time and I have inquired about it multiple times and we've been told no multiple times.
I think you and the applicant should get together and, uh, have that prepared, be able to pull some of that information together. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak for or against the project? No? Then, uh, make a motion to table VIP Motorsports located eleven eighty-six until our October fourteenth zoning board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, uh-
Thank you.
Thank you. Roof located at seven eighty-nine DeWitt.
Applicant Sharon Arena is requesting a seven-foot side setback where fifteen is required with the proposed construction of an eight-by-twenty-four roof over an existing deck in an R-three single-family residential district. Mrs. Arena, are you here? Yeah, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Representing agents are Sharon Arena and Kip Finley.
Hello, I'm Kip Finley with Victory Hill Land Company. I'm the engineer that designed the roof over the existing deck. My customer here is Sharon Arena, or so it goes, here for moral support. I'd like her to tell you why she would like the roof over it.
I have an existing deck and basically during the winter time, because there's no roof over the entrance door, it sheets over with ice and water and that, and it freezes. And I actually got, um, barred in, or barred into my home this past winter. I had to call my son from work, he, you know, he came after work to chip me out. I have a back door, but it goes into the backyard, which was full of snow and I wouldn't have been able to open the fence getting out that way. And then, um, the neighbor on the left-hand side has lots of oak trees and Catalba trees and the debris just comes down over my deck. So I, every day I have to go out and clean that up before I could sit down and use it.
So the intent is to have the roof extend and follow the, um, the footprint of the existing deck, is that correct?
Yes.
It won't extend any further beyond?
Nope, actually the, uh, the soffit and the gutter will line up with the face of the deck.
Okay.
The, the prob, biggest problem is that the door swings out because the building was built in the nineteen thirties very economically, there's no room for the door to swing in. So normally a door would swing in and the storm door would swing out, but, um, she gets stuck in there. She did submit a couple letters of support, it had some pictures of ice and snow with them, I don't know if you've asked them or not.
Yes, we have.
Here we have, okay.
Well, then, I think if, if there's no questions, we could just go on to the other parts of it.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
I had an opportunity to come out and, and take a look. I mean, I, I definitely don't see any, any issue, you have a very narrow, uh, property. Being that the edge of the gutter is not gonna be extending any further than the deck itself. Yeah, I don't personally have any, any additional questions or concerns. Anybody else?
No.
Anybody wanna, anybody from the public wanna speak for or against this project?
I would.
Okay.
Can we approve this so I don't have to leave work and ship her out to the-
Very good. Uh, I'll bring, I'll, I'll bring it back to the board, any other questions from the board?
No.
No, it, it makes sense.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion for a type-two, uh, action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section six-one-seven-point-five of the environmental code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, findings, um, you know, this request is not, not out of character for the neighborhood, the house is set back, it's really not gonna affect the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. It's actually, you know, my opinion, will end up enhancing the, uh, the character of, of the house moving forward. Being that the property is, is set back, it's really not a detriment to any nearby properties. The properties that it is nearby to, the applicant has submitted, um, letters of, um, acceptance, approval of the, of the changes. Because of how narrow this property is, this really is not achievable by any other feasible, uh, means. Really to be able to keep ice from shedding onto, uh, onto the door and keep debris off of the, the deck, a roof is, is necessary to be able to do that. Request is, uh, it's not substantial, um, as it's, it's set back and other neighbors are in acceptance of it. Difficulty is not self-created, this is a, it's a shotgun house on a very narrow plot of land, not really providing for any other opportunities other than, um, the proposed approach. Think that covers it, anybody else wanna add anything else?
It's, it's not going to encroach any further out than the deck that's already there. So with respect to encroaching on the neighbor next door, the, the landing area is already there. It's just covering the landing area, which makes egress into the house a little bit better.
Yeah, and there was a variance granted in nineteen ninety-three to build the deck.
Okay.
So it's this high, so it's just gonna be this high. It's not that much of a change.
Yeah, there's really no change, just-
Right. The gutters are going to keep, gutters and downspouts are gonna keep the water on the, uh, subject property, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna route them to the front of the house and out into the front yard.
Perfect, okay. All right, with that, I make a motion for, uh, an area variance to allow a side setback of seven feet where fifteen feet is required. And I'm saying seven feet, uh, it will align with the deck below, which is seven feet off the property line, where a fifteen-foot is required associated with the construction of an eight-foot by twenty-four-foot roof over an existing deck on- over an existing deck on a zero-point-five-one acre parcel having SPL zero-six-three-point-one-four-dash-one-dash-four-nine, located in R three single-family residential district under sections three-five-zero-dash-twelve, three-five-zero-dash-four-seven of the code of town of Webster.
Second. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Spanpanato?
Aye.
You have your area variance. You will have to get a building permit. You have to, you have one year for substantial completion.
Yep, we'll probably be starting within a couple of weeks.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Now you don't have to dig her out of the, out of the house anymore.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too. Next up, carport at four-three-eight McEwen Drive.
Applicant Lisa McBride is requesting to allow zero-foot front setback where fifty feet is required for the carport and to allow twenty-feet front setback where fifty is required for a deck that is existing on an accessory structure. They're located in the R three single-family residential district. Relevant sections of the code is three-fifty-dash-twelve and three-fifty-dash-three-eight.
Hi, my name's Lisa McBride. I live at four-thirty-eight McEwen Drive. Good evening, members of the board. We're here to get a variance for a deck that's in front of a storage shed, which was inaccessible really because we're on a very large hill that was mostly gravel covered in front of the shed. So we had during COVID, put the deck in, so now we're asking for a variance. And along with that, we're asking for a variance for a carport that is erected, and that's in front of the deck. Okay, I'll go on. Our driveway, like I said, is very steep. And we've had trouble with our cars before being parked even halfway up when there was just like two inches of snow. One time our Tahoe slid down the driveway and almost into the woods, except that a tree stopped it. There's just woods across from our house. And we're kind of on a corner. We're on a private drive where there's only one house at the very end of the road. And other than that, during the summer, really, nobody can see the deck or the carport. But besides it being a danger, the driveway's so steep, the deck helped us may get into our storage shed, which is quite large, and that's, you know, been permitted by the previous owners. But there was really no way to go in and out of the, the car, I mean, the shed because of this gravelly hill that's right in front of it. And then where the carport was, they had, the previous owners had made a flat and sort of dirt area for two cars that had some big rocks around it and sort of boulders. But they were all disintegrating and the whole hill was sort of coming down and making another gravelly kind of mess. So basically, we wanted to use the front, not only because we border the bay, but the woods are in front of us, to see, we wanted the deck to see the beauty of our front yard since it's so private. And the carport was basically to shelter our cars, so they weren't covered in snow. And we would have a flat spot to keep our cars. And to park on, just to work on them or, you know, whatever. Just that's how steep our driveway is.
I had no idea what a variance is.
Yes, and so we apologize for not applying for the variance beforehand. But I really didn't know what a variance was. I didn't know that I had to obtain one. So, and I certainly didn't think that a carport needed that permit. I thought it was just something people put up. I didn't know it was a building of a.
Floating deck.
Yeah, I thought it was like a floating deck. And this is, you can say who you are.
Hi, I'm Tim Hillbrand, four-three-eight McEwen Drive. The deck is not attached to the gas, the work shed. I didn't know you had to get a variance to put things up.
So we're asking, I'm not sure if my measurements were accurate, but we're asking for the variance for the deck and the carport, basically.
Some approval.
Approval for that.
Any questions from the board?
How long has the carport been there?
Well.
Three, three years.
Three years. The, it started with the deck during COVID, the summer of COVID. The deck and then the carport was after.
The deck's been there for five years.
Five years. Yeah, the deck's been there for five years.
And we went to the, to the town and asked them about the deck, and they said they're gonna count it as being in a.
As existing structure. We filled out a form for, after they told us to cease work on the deck, we waited like two years, never heard anything else. I went to the town to ask them what would, should happen next. And they said that, I think it was Mr. Potter, had retired and that we should just fill out an existing structure form. So we thought the deck was okay at that point.
Otherwise, they never would have started building a carport.
Yeah, so, and then the carport was just after our truck slid down the hill. I fell and broke my wrist. And we also had damage to the windshields of one of our cars while it was parked in the flat part. So we wanted to be able to cover, and we also have an antique nineteen fifty-nine wood lineman that I had been storing for years, but it was getting kind of expensive for the winter storage. So we thought if we had the carport, I could put the boat under there to keep it protected also.
And you got permission from R G and E?
Yeah, I'll bring that up. That's in the folders.
Other, other questions from the board?
I just have one. So I actually have the opposite problem. My driveway slopes down to my house. So getting out of my driveway on a winter day is difficult like you getting in. But I did some French drains and whatnot because during heavy rains and things, obviously, water pulls towards my house. Water's obviously going towards your carport here. Any, do you have any drainage or where does the water go to? Because my only concern would be.
Their carport is actually still higher than the street.
Is it higher up?
Yeah.
So the water doesn't get trapped into that wall?
There's a drain at the bottom of the driveway, too.
Yeah, we have two drainage spots at the end.
Drain underneath the roof.
Okay, I was just concerned maybe the wall giving out at some point with too much water pressure building up over time.
Yeah, well, there's also a drain inside the carport that goes down to meet up with the drain under our driveway.
Okay.
That goes, then goes down a hill, I think, to the bay across the, the private driveway. It's a private road, I guess. It's only one person at the end of our street. So we didn't have, and I also submitted letters from our neighbors, and nobody has a concern about it. And I think I had eight le, seven or eight letters.
And you got permission from R G and E?
Oh, and also I did reach out to R G and E since that in front of the carport is a ten-foot strip that's a R G and E easement. But in that ten-foot strip, there's a sailboat that's been there before we moved in, like a decorative, small sailboat. And then a huge tree is right in the middle of the ten-foot right-of-way for R G and E. So we had met with R G and E. They came out and looked at all of it and researched whether we were over any lines in the ground. And they said that we were not and that it was fine if we would have, we could maintain that wall in the carport that borders the R G and E easement or right-of-way. And so they wrote a letter, which is in the packet.
Other questions from the board?
I would just like to clarify the right-of-way conversation that was had with the applicants. The concern from town staff is that the carport is over the property line in the right-of-way.
Oh.
It's okay.
Oh, okay.
That's what was the concern that came also in in the, the code that the violation.
So the carport is not fully on the property line?
Correct. That is the main concern for town staff, which is why they're requesting a zero-foot setback because.
Okay, I missed that. But even a zero-set footback is beyond.
But it's beyond zero, right? No, it's negative.
Correct. And the survey that was provided was from years prior, which doesn't properly show the carport and the deck. So we had spoken with the applicants about having an updated survey, which is, was a recommendation from staff.
Right, right.
So the main concern is the physical location of the carport on the property.
I'm not sure how far over.
Yeah, I had tried.
Thank you for that clarification. I did not realize that it was beyond the property lines.
I had tried to get a survey, but they could not do it by tonight. They had said they could do it by October, but they needed like at least four weeks. That was McMahon and LaRue.
They might, they don't know if it's three inches over the line or what.
Doesn't matter. If, if you're on somebody else's property, you're on somebody else's property, right? So.
But I do have an updated survey from when I bought the house in two thousand eighteen. But it looks to be exactly the same survey. I don't know if you'd want to look at that.
The two thousand eighteen survey would not provide accuracy of where the carport is.
Oh, okay.
An updated survey for two thousand twenty-five would show everything that's within your property.
Right.
That's what the concern was.
Okay.
Yes.
So I guess I'm gonna make a statement and a clarification. So R G and E did not approve this. They indicated that they are aware of that the carport is built within the easement. They've put any onus of damage, any issues is all on you. It's not an approval of, it's not, it, you made them, they're aware of. And they're saying, fine, we're, we're aware of. The other component, I understand where you're coming from, or I, I can understand where you're coming from. But at the end of the day, if you're speeding on a road and you say, I didn't know what the speed limit was, you should have found out.
Yes.
So having a deck built without a permit, having a carport built without a permit or without even asking becomes problematic. But that being said, you do have a number of neighbors that were, that identified that they didn't have an issue with it. There is one neighbor that we received documentation that they were not able to be here this evening. They asked us to take it into consideration that this neighbor does share the driveway with you. So they are located at four hundred McEwen Drive. They do have a concern with, with this. Construction project, carport and deck is detrimental. So I'm gonna paraphrase. I'm not gonna read verbatim. It's detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, both in appearance and in quality. Current, the, the storage room in the drawings was originally permitted as a workshop by, built by the prior owners. Current owner has upgraded electric and refurbished the building as additional living space. The proposed deck currently holds a, already constructed, holds a picnic table. They're concerned about quality of the construction of the deck and the carport. Front yard, deck is unsightly, has become a collection spot for, for junk. It's consistent with the management of the property. Deck and carport drastically violate the count, the town code for setbacks. Neighbor did not take town code into account and just constructed the structures on the, on their own. And it goes on. I mean, there's, there's more here, but that, that ultimately kind of sums it up. So you do have, like I said, there's a number of applicants for, there is one against. This information will be part of the application, correct, and available? So other questions, comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I, I think going along with that, what our counselor has told us on many occasions, we set precedents. I mean, they built a deck and they built a carport without permits. And now we're expected to approve it. Does that mean that better to ask forgiveness than approval? I, I mean, I have a problem with it. And I also, when I viewed it, it looked pretty unsightly. The whole yard did. So I, I just have a lot of issues with it. And the fact that it's not even on their property even makes it worse.
Anybody else?
No, I agree. It becomes an issue at closing for any other property owner as the transfer title indeed, you know, come up. And then two, you know, who knows what was used, well, how far those are buried. So there's a lot of questions that remain unanswered.
I'll open up to the public if anybody wants to speak for or against this project? No?
Well, some of the issues with maybe the deck was it didn't quite get finished. And a lot of stuff is out there because he's gone through cancer for the past year. So some of that is easily cleaned up if we were able to get a variance, variance for the deck and hopefully the carport. I mean, we can definitely make it unsightly so that that neighbor would be happier. I mean, we're willing to remedy the situation in any way and hopefully mitigate any expensive fixes. And I, you know, I'm willing to do whatever it takes.
So the deck was not completed? You stopped it when the town said stop?
It was completed, but there's still some lumber next to it that he wasn't able to lift. There's some boards. Maybe that's what they're talking about?
They also said that they're gonna consider it existing structure when we went to the town hall. And then they lost the paperwork.
We do not have on file the paperwork that would have been submitted to state that this is an existing structure.
We don't have any of that paperwork.
We don't have that on file. We do have the notice of a stop work order from a previous building inspector.
When was that from?
Two thousand and twenty-two.
I would rather want to start it on the carport if they didn't give us the existing structure on the deck.
And we're willing to clean up anything that might be upsetting that neighbor.
We don't have our neighbors a pump house.
Well, they're at the end of the dri, the people I think you're referring to are at the very end of the driveway.
I'm assuming.
So the only time they would see it is when they're driving by, yes. I mean, that isn't fair to them.
Two, two times a day at least, right?
We're willing to remedy it in any way, in any way we can.
If this board was to, let's go both scenarios. If this board was to deny it, what is the town's next actions?
The structures would have to be removed.
Okay. If the board was to prove it, I mean, we don't have a building permit. Me personally, I was looking at the structure and the wall. And in my profession, I would be concerned with how and how it was constructed. So what, if this board was to approve it, what is the next step? Does the town?
They would have to apply for building permits for both structures, providing plans of construction for these structures.
Right.
That would be reviewed by the building department, building inspector, and code enforcement officers.
Okay. So the building inspectors could potentially go out there, look at it and say, it doesn't match.
And a new survey, Mike.
What's that?
New survey.
A survey, right.
Right.
Correct, yeah, and, and.
In a survey, yeah. Building inspector could go out there, for example, the foundation wall is not straight in any way, shape, or form, right? So building inspectors, even if they were to get drawings from a, an engineer or whatnot, they're going to show a straight wall, I guess, as the building inspector would say, that's not straight.
The structure would have to match the plans that were provided, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one. It's, it, would it be possible to separate the two structures?
Absolutely.
Because I think.
From a vote standpoint?
Yes, because I wouldn't, I'd want the deck to be built properly. Don't get me wrong about that, and with a permit and structurally sound. But I don't, I, I, in good conscience, I can't. But I don't, in good conscience, I can't approve that carport on another person's property.
Is there, is there a variance needed for the deck, or is it just because it was previously constructed?
It needs a variance for location to the front property.
To the front, I got you. Thank you. Okay, very good. Okay.
I, I guess I would agree with John that I would handle each structure as a separate, a separate variance. One of the things I look at is if the structures weren't there already and the applicant came to the board asking to place them in that location, is that something that a board would grant? The deck, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but a deck in that location does not seem out of sorts with respect to the topography of that lot and, and access to that structure. The carport in that location, especially beyond the lot line, and, and they, I know it's not a temporary structure, but it has that look of a temporary structure. I don't know, I don't know that the board would grant that in its current location.
No other location for it.
Right, because it's the only flat spot on the whole property in the front.
I mean, I can park it in the yard, in the front yard, but you like that better.
Understood. And I think that's, that's a.
Well, we truly need to know exactly where it is.
I'm willing to get a survey if we could, if you wanted to, or we were able to table it, I could get a survey, but I'm not sure if it would be able to.
Oh, no, I, yeah.
If we could get the zero variance, I could maybe move the carport over two feet, then it'd be on the line, on our line, on our line.
So, so I guess this is, the board can do a couple of different things. We can vote on it. And, and I think I would do the same as mentioned, we would separate out the, the deck from the carport. We don't have enough information to make a, let me rephrase it. I don't have enough information to make a positive recommendation for the carport. Having a survey would be very helpful. However, building on somebody else's property is, it's not good, right?
Well, I, I thought it was our property.
Not permitted, right. It's illegal, right? You're essentially stealing property from somebody else is what you're doing. So we can vote now on the two separate components. There are additional elements that you would need. I don't know if it would change anybody's decision, to be honest, knowing that it's not on your property. The other option is, are you willing to withdraw your application at this point to come back?
Well, withdraw or table to get the survey?
Well, they would be, we would, right, we would be the ones tabling it, right, but they would, they would have to withdraw, I'm assuming, right, they would be the ones withdrawing.
Well, could they, could they amend? If they came back next, keeping the carport separate, we're talking about the carport. If they, if we tabled that tonight, could they come back next month with an amended application that moves the carport back to their own property and then ask for the variance in that respect? Well, they need the survey, they need all of, all of that, yes.
They would need plans all the way around, but now you're taking it down.
Well, I don't know if it could be, the way, the way it's structured, I don't know if you could pick it up and move it.
Just fight to the ground. Sorry. And get the, get everything necessary, yeah. So would you be willing to table, I'm saying, I'm going to say table the matter. I'm going to say sixty days because it's going to take time for you to get the information that you need. Would you be willing to table the matter to be able to get the information necessary to come back to this board?
Absolutely.
At the November meeting.
At the November meeting.
And then what information exactly?
So we will need a survey.
Okay, survey?
Carport.
Well, for the whole property.
For the whole property.
And the debt, right, for the whole property, absolutely. A revise for the entire property.
And you may, if, if the original survey company is still in existence, they may be a little bit faster.
Yeah, they're not. I called, I tried to find out, yeah.
The other thing.
Never mind.
The other thing I would recommend is find an engineer or an architect that would be able to look at the structure both of the deck and the carport to provide you with a determination. You're going to need drawings, sign and seal, I'm assuming sign and seal drawings for these components, which at that point, you're going to need an architect or an engineer if they're able to provide a letter of review because I don't suspect we're going to want the town to go out there until this is a fully resolved. So if you can have a third party do that, that would also help me at least. I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board members.
The decking company would be all right, but I mean, they would have to submit plans for a client.
Right, yeah.
And they would also be able to verify what's used and what's to code properly.
Right, because they would know the code.
Honestly, they would be able to tell you exactly, and even probably let you be aware that you are not in code, right? Or you are, and this is what you're going to need to do in order to fix it. That would also help coming back saying, we were recommended that we need X, Y, Z done in order to comply with current decking codes.
Okay, and that would be from the engineer or architect?
I would call decking company.
Decking company, okay.
I've seen some decks built that I wouldn't even stand on. So depending on who you get.
Reputable.
Right?
If I took the wall down and just threw a bunch of big stones down next to it, it'd be just about almost what it was.
The biggest component right now is I need a survey. There's an overhang, there's, I don't, you can't tell me, right now, you can't tell me that the vertical steel pylons are on your property or not at this point, right? The concrete wall might be, the pylons, I have no idea, and you can't tell me what is or what isn't. So getting the survey, you come back, we can have that conversation at that point, but right now, we don't have enough information.
Okay.
Is there anything else the board would like?
I don't think.
Okay. All right.
So I'm not putting in a new application?
No.
I'm going to separate the carport and deck.
And I will send you an email tomorrow with additional information for you.
Okay, and then, so it's still one application for the deck and carport?
We'll make, we'll make separate motions when we do our votes.
Okay, so it's, all right, okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to table, what is it, four thirty-eight McEwen Drive until the November zoning board meeting.
November.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In November, yeah.
So that'll be November eleventh.
November eleventh.
November eighteenth, actually.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, eleven is a holiday.
Got you, November eighteenth.
Oh, November eighteenth, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh.
What is it?
It's the twenty-fifth?
On the zoning board side, it says the twenty-fifth for some reason. On the planning board, it says eighteenth. I just assumed we were, of November.
All of the meetings in November have shifted later in the month, so.
So we are.
So are we the twenty-fifth?
Wow, that's really, that's really late.
So November eighteenth.
Okay. Look on the website, the dates are on the website.
Okay, I'll look.
We need to know now.
No, we can, she's going to send me an email.
Next up, we have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Garage located at one seven five nine Ridge Road, applicant John Hayes.
So applicant is requesting a side setback of twelve feet where fifteen is required, and then a variance for the height of the pole barn. Total height would be twenty-three feet where twenty feet maximum is allowed. And this is with the proposed construction of seven hundred and eighty-four square foot garage. I would also like to note that the applicant received conditional planning board approval last week based on their variances presentation here tonight, so.
Hi, my name is John Hayes, seventeen fifty-nine Ridge Road. We're looking to put up a twenty-four by thirty-two by twelve pole barn to be used for a garage for our boat and put the wife's car in for the winter. Looking for a variance of a side setback, the east side is where, we need twelve feet where fifteen feet is. That's so the, the garage isn't behind the house, it'll be lined up with the house. If you look at the survey map, our house and driveway are at weird angles. And I just want to, I think it'd look better if it was in line with the house. And then the, um, the height we need is actually, it's twenty-three feet, ten inches. We're doing the attic trusses, so we have extra storage up top. The garage will match the color of the house. And that's about it.
So it's not a twelve-foot-high structure? It is?
Twelve-foot-high ceiling.
Okay.
And the overall height.
Twenty-three foot ten.
What's that?
The overall height is twenty-three foot, ten inches, correct?
And the house, the one picture I got of the house, the, actually, our house is actually, the basement is showing on one side, on the driveway side. So that dimension's twenty-one feet to the driveway. And where the garage will be twenty-one feet back, it's another seventeen feet drop. So basically, the heights from line of sight from the road, it should be about the same as the height of the house.
So I have one question because I don't think, and Josh, I'm going to ask you, I don't think we need a height variance because the height is to the, the mean of the gable roof height. Peak is twenty-three foot, ten, correct? The mean is going to be quite a bit less than that, it's going to be, trying to calculate it out on here, unfortunately, it's not.
Do because it's taller than the house.
Okay.
Even though it's going to be set down, so from the road, it's going to look like it's the same height.
Okay. No circumstance succeed twenty, oh, okay. In no circumstance succeed twenty feet. However, that, but that's the average.
Right.
Or the main home. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. I had that written down too, but.
No, that's, because it took me a minute, it's like, but that, yeah.
Right.
Is there's going to be up and down stairs?
Yep, there's going to be stairs. You're going to have a loft up there.
What is the loft going to be used for?
Um, extra storage and we're thinking about moving the treadmill and the bike out of the basement up there.
Plumbing?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
No, no plumbing.
Just electric?
Just electric.
Space will be inhabitable, or I guess it'll be inhabitable if you're putting treadmill and a bike up there?
What's that?
The space will be habitable, so it will be able to be used to.
Yeah.
Live, live in to a degree.
No, not live in.
Power, but no water.
Are you heating it?
Yes, we're going to probably have heat in it.
I'm assuming electric heater, are you going to run gas lines to it, or?
Probably do a mini split.
Be quite a bit shorter than the barn right next door?
Shorter or taller?
Shorter.
It'll be taller.
Than the barn?
The one right next to it, yeah.
It'll be?
That one's sixteen feet, I think.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought too. Any other questions from the board? Open up to the public, anybody want to speak for or against this project? We're back to the board. Any other questions from the board?
No, I, there's really no other location on that property. And with respect to the setback, it's going to be significantly further from the lot line than the barn next door is to the lot line. And it is, the base of this is going to be behind the rear line of the house. So that's not an issue.
The barn or the, the structure will, your driveway goes down, right, so, right, am I correct, or is it, like, the actual property drops?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a hill in the back.
The finished floor of your house will be higher than the finished floor of the pole barn, is that correct?
Finished floor?
Yeah, where the, the ground that you're parking the car at is lower than the.
House.
House.
Yeah.
First floor.
Yeah.
How much would you say?
Are you talking the basement or?
No, I'm talking the first floor.
It's a twelve-course basement, so probably ten feet.
Okay. So the point, the reason I was asking that is the peak of this structure probably is, I don't think is actually going to be higher because of the elevation changes of the main house. So, all right. Any other comments, questions from the board? Nope? All right. I'd like to make a motion for a type-two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section six one seven point five of the environmental code. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Findings, this request is not out of character for the neighborhood. Having a pole barn on this street, there are a number of older barns there. So it is not out of character for the neighborhood itself. It does not create a detriment to nearby properties in any way, shape. Again, there's a, there is a barn directly next to where this, this pole barn will be located. So again, it does not create a detriment to nearby properties. Due to the topography of the, the property, this, this benefit is not achievable by placing it at any other locations. This is directly off of the driveway next to the house. It's not achievable in any other means. Not, this is not a substantial request, though putting a pole barn on any property is, is substantial. Having other barn structures in the area makes this non-substantial. There's no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site of the neighborhood. Difficulty is not self-created because of the orientation of the property and where the house is and the topography of the land. It's not an undesirable change, and yeah, I think that covers it. Anybody want to add anything else?
No, I think you got it. Do you want me to make a motion? I can find it.
I got you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for an area variance to allow a side setback of twelve feet where a fifteen foot is required, and a height variance for twenty-three feet where twenty feet is the maximum associated with the construction of a seven hundred and eighty-four square foot garage on a zero point five seven acre parcel having SBL zero eight one point zero one dash one dash two zero located in, in the LL Large Lot Residential District under sections three five zero dash one three and three five zero dash three six of the code of the town of Webster.
Second. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Stampanato?
Aye.
You have your variance for both height and side setback for the garage. You will need a building permit. You have one year for substantial completion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a garage located at five twelve Road, Jay Palermo.
Applicant Jay Palermo is requesting a side setback of five point nine feet where twenty is required, and then a variance for the location of an accessory building in the front yard of the property. This is with the proposed construction of. This is with the proposed construction of a 672-square-foot detached two-car garage. Also, would like to note that this applicant received planning board approvals last week, dependent upon approvals this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, my name is Jay Palermo, JC Concepts, nice to see some familiar faces and you guys from last week. I just wanna note that last week on the provided survey map, there was not an existing secondary structure, which was a shed, that was part of these, planning approval last week was the removal of that shed, along with the application for zoning. I just wanted to note that there was a certificate of compliance issued on 4/6 of 2022, so the actual previous owner did have a permit for that secondary building, but it is going to a good home, it's coming to my property in Bristol for my goats, so we've remediated that. But what we're gonna do is clean up the property a little bit, we're gonna build a nice little two-car garage, increasing the size of the existing garage by 10 feet to the east, and another four feet to the lakeside. And it's one of those situations where it's lakeside, front side, backside, we don't really know what the front is on the lake. So it is in the technical backyard, because it's a Lakeview property, so that's why there's that variance for the location of the, the proposed new building. It's one of those fun gray areas that we've all seen on the lakes. So, just ready to get rid of the existing building that is currently has a foundation issues, and some settling and some cracked concrete, and that's just all gonna be brought to life with a new pole barn-style building, but no steel. It is gonna be sited to match the existing character of the neighbors, and it's gonna match the existing color of the house. It's also gonna be a shingled roof that is not gonna be steel as well. We also have remediation of the water with a drain tile in the front side of the building, going to a French drain to collect all the rainwater that's gonna come off the roof of the structure, tying into the new existing driveway.
And this is going in the exact same location as the barn that, or the garage that's there now?
Correct.
Just larger footprint?
Yep, correct.
Height-wise, how much taller is it gonna be than what is there now?
So we are at 14 feet, for my building, off-average grade, we're at 14 feet. The existing building is just a little bit smaller, at 11 foot 6, and the current home is at 19 foot plus or minus off-average grade.
Thank you.
So it is gonna be lower than the existing home lakeside.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? I had the opportunity to see the property, and the variance that we, we see frequently on houses at the lake, so.
Since there's already a garage in that location, would we just consider this an alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming, or because it's replacing it, it would be considered new?
We're enlarging it, too, and we're getting closer to the Yeah, and the setbacks are getting closer.
From what I understand, Mr. Donald Brown, the previous owner, did obtain a permit for a carport previously, and there's actually footers in the ground, actually landing right where our new footers are gonna be going. So that, that side setback was already approved, I'm not sure when, I did not pull a FOIL request on the property.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody wanna speak for or against this project? Okay, we're back to the board, any other questions from the board?
No, it's, it's the only logical location.
Yeah. Like to make a motion for a type-two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR, section 617.5 of the environmental code. Have a second? Second?
Second, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wanna do the findings?
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
This request is not out of character with the neighborhood, we have had several requests along any stretch of Lake Road to build the accessory structures and the garages in the front yard between the house and the road, because lakefront property considers the lake the front. And you don't wanna put it in your view. The detriment will not be created to nearby properties, there is currently a structure there, and there's going to be a structure there, so it's really not going to change the impact to any of the homes surrounding this. It's not going to change anybody's line of sight. Benefit is not achievable by any other method. In this instance, it really wouldn't fit in the rear of the house, and because it's going to be a garage, it would make much more sense to be closer to the road. The request is really not substantial, the building is going to be slightly larger than it is currently, but it's not going to be significantly larger, the, the setback is going to be outlandish. Additionally, that's a very odd-shaped lot, and it's quite narrow at the road, so it would be difficult, I think, to meet the side setback without being smack dab in the middle of the lot. The difficulty is really not self-created, and that the house and the existing garage structure were laid out before this owner, I don't know when they were changed, but they were, they've already been in that position. This is just an improvement to the structure and the lot, it's not an undesirable change. And while the request is significant, it's not, and it's really not significant. Anything else?
What is, what is the, the measure of the side setback that's required?
Asking for 5.9 feet from
5.9 feet?
Yep.
And right now, it's a
Right now, it's, I think it's a 20, what is it, 20 foot 9, or, no, it's 15 foot 9 from the southeast corner of the side setback, and we're asking for 10 feet, which the current garage is 14 feet wide, we're gonna go 24 feet wide.
So you're asking for a 10-foot side setback, not a 5-foot side setback? You're asking for 5 feet deviation from the code?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing you the other way, but the picture's telling me that, no, it's a 10-foot setback, okay. So then it really is not significant?
No. Okay.
Well, it's interesting, anybody have anything else to add to that?
No, I think you've covered it, no.
All right, with that, I can make a motion to grant an area variance at 512 Lake Road to allow
So there's a side setback of?
So it's technically a side setback of 10 feet?
Before, before we make this motion?
Because the allowable's, some of the applications that were 15, some applications, in my, in my, in the notes here, it says, where 20 foot is required. So some clarification on that would be nice, of even the existing garage that's currently located there wouldn't meet that 20-foot setback.
Agreed, and it's a, we just wanna get it right for the motion.
Yes.
Right, we, we say it wrong, it can cause other issues, right? So we just wanna get it right.
Yep.
Because the plan that you were provide, that you provided us with the red outline of the new barn, I think you're saying it's only about 5 feet on the, I guess that would be the east side, it's 5 feet wider on the east side.
It's actually gonna be, the, the current southwest corner of the barn on that map is our pivot point. So we're gonna be going an additional 10 feet to the right of the structure that's there. So making the structure 24 feet wide, not 14 feet wide.
So then the
So then the side setback truly is going to be 5 feet?
Yes, I believe, yes. That, I'm sorry, I don't have that survey map in front of me right now, but yes, that, that does make more sense that mathematically, as we, if we shift the barn to the left and all, which we could
So then this is, this is graphically shown incorrectly?
Our barn, is that the survey map with the red on it?
Yes.
Yes.
And that outer line is the red.
So, my application has always been from the right, having it pivot from the left-hand side, the west-south corner of the existing barn, going 10 feet further to the east.
So is your west wall going to remain roughly in the same location, but the east wall is going to move 10 feet?
Correct, because if we move the west wall over, it takes away that sidewalk, that'll be going down through the, okay. It'll take, that'll be encroaching on the sidewalk that goes to the center of the house, and then
Okay, that's not on the survey.
That picture that's up there isn't what I have here from my application. So.
It's the same survey, it's in black and white on the screen, rather than the red in the application.
No, well, Jay, what you're saying is, what's up on the screen doesn't match what you are looking at?
Yes, correct. Because I have, there's just that little bubble over the existing garage. I have the ability to go 2 feet to the west, getting that 7 feet off that east line, but then I get into a hedgerow on the west side of the property, that is on the other side of the sidewalk that currently goes from the driveway to the house, and that's their egress to the house. So we could, essentially, from what I'm looking at in my picture
We're not, we're not asking to change, we're, we're asking to clarify where it is. That's all, that's all we wanna understand is, again, when we make our motion, we're going to identify a setback. We wanna make sure it's the right setback.
Correct.
Graphically, this is only showing, this is showing a 10-foot side setback on the, it looks like on the east side, where the application is for a 3.1-foot setback. And you just indicated that this graphic here doesn't match
What I'm looking at here.
What you're looking at there.
Yeah.
I need to know, what is the setback from the east property line?
So the 5.9 in, in the agenda is actually the correct dimension.
Correct.
So it is currently at 15.7, it's moving 10 feet, so it's going to be 5.9.
Okay.
Okay.
Thought I was going crazy.
All right, let me start that again.
Sorry.
Let me get right back to where I started from. All right, I will make a motion to grant an area variance at 512 Lake Road, allowing a side, an east side setback of 5.9 feet, where 20 feet is required, to locate an accessory buil, and, and to locate an accessory building in the front yard, which is not permitted, associated with the construction of a 672-square-foot detached two-car garage on a .49-acre parcel having SBL number 048.19-1-82.1, located in an R1 single-family residential district under sections 350-10 and 350-36 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Second.
Oh, where's my list? Mrs. Volo? Aye. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Stampanato?
Aye.
You have your variance for the garage, you have to obtain a building permit to be able to construct it, you have one year for substantial completions.
Awesome, thank you, Board, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You guys have a nice night.
Good luck, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next up, accessory building located at 485 Time Drive, Jim Harold.
All right, applicant Jim Harold is requesting to allow a rear setback of 20 feet, where 50 feet is required, in an R1 single-family residential district, with the proposed construction of a 432-square-foot shed. I would like to point out to the board that this property is in a cluster division, so it does have different rear setback requirements than the R1 in our code.
Thank you, I was confused about that when I was going through it.
Yep. So is 50 feet actually what's required, or is 50 feet?
50 feet is required.
Based on the cluster?
Based on the cluster, yes. And you should all have a hard copy of the updated survey
Yes.
at your computer.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jim Harold, I live at 485 Time Drive. I'm looking to get a variance to put my shed within my fenced area of the backyard. One of the main reasons is because my yard has a good slope to it, leak going away from the house toward the back. As it gets closer to the fence, it, it levels out, so that would make it a lot better. Also, if, yeah, so if I have to move it closer to, closer 50 feet away, I'll actually be almost on my pool, but I would have to also dig down probably 2 feet from the front end to match the back end, so then water could flow into it. Or if I built the front up, I'd have a 2-foot drop going off the back. And it's all within my yard, it's a beautiful structure, it's gonna be sited to match the property, it's gonna be within my, inside of my 6-foot privacy fence. My neighbor on the left loves the idea, he's okay with it. From the street, I don't know if the, the pictures I sent, Erica, if those are in the packet, but we sit, my back of my property sits pretty far back. And then I, I backed to 250, so there's actually like 20 yards of trees behind my yard, between my back of my house and 250, so that's all covered, it's, it's empty area, just full of trees. And then from the right side, I'm on the corner lot, and it's quite a distance from that road. It would hardly even be seen from there.
Any questions from the board?
How tall a building is it?
What's that?
How high is the building gonna be built?
Oh, it's just a standard shed, so it's probably like 10 feet. It's a New England style with the, with those windows going across the front, but, so it's probably like maybe 15 feet to the top or less. I have a picture of it, actually, it's this shed right here, just a standard shed, it's just gonna be longer, 36 feet. Do you want me to show it to you?
No, it's all right.
No, it's in our packet. Any other questions from the board?
And it's going right up against the fence, or are you leaving a gap to maintain?
No, it's, it's gonna go as close to the fence as possible, and then in the center of the fence, I'm gonna take two panels out, so that I could drive my tractor in, out of the yard to mow the outside, and then drive back into the inside.
Okay.
It'll have opposing doors.
So it will be back of the fence?
It's gonna be inside, right up to the fence, yeah.
Okay.
Any utilities, I'm assuming no utilities?
No, no utilities.
Other questions from the board? Anybody wanna open up to the public, anybody wanna speak for or against this project? Nope? All right, back to the board, any other questions, comments from the board? Nope?
None.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for a type-two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR, section 617.5 of the environmental code. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Findings, yeah, over here. This request is not out of character in the neighborhood, because the, the shed is gonna be located in the rear property, this is a corner lot, and this will be located in the rear property, within a 6-foot privacy fence. The construction is, I believe it's a wood construction, made to look residential in nature. It's not gonna create a detriment to any nearby properties, to the east are woods, to the south is a, is the corner, corner of the corner lot. To the, to the west is the house, and then to the north is, is one neighbor, again, with a 6-foot fence going all the way around, the, the shed will be essentially hidden within that space. Due to the, due to the topography of the property, this, the construction of this really is not achievable without significant additional modifications and means. Client is, or the applicant is asking for a shed, this is not a substantial request in any residential area. This is not a substantial request in any residential, uh, area. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. The difficulty is not self-created because of the topography, because of being a, a corner lot. To be able to place a, a shed, uh, this really is the best location. Uh, it's not an undesirable change. Again, it's going to be hidden, uh, in the back, and, uh, the request is not, uh, significant. Anybody want to add anything else?
Well, and is it? Technically, it looks like a shed. It needs the accessory structure setback just based on the square footage of it because it's long.
Right.
But for all intents and purposes, it's, it's a shed.
Yep.
Just a long skinny shed.
I have a lot of junk.
Oh, I get it.
Don't we all? All right, a- anybody else? No, all right. Uh, I'd like to make, um, a motion, uh, for an area variance to allow a rear setback of... Am I in the right one? Uh, rear setback of fifteen feet, where fifty feet is required, associated with the construction of a four-hundred-and-thirty-two square foot shed on a zero-point-six-two acre parcel having SBL zero-five-zero, point-zero-three-dash-eight-dash-one-four, located in the R-one single-family residential district under sections three-five-zero-dash-ten, three-five-zero-dash-three-six of the, uh, code of the town of Webster. Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Stampanato?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
You have your, uh, area of variance. You have to obtain a building permit for, uh, for this structure, um, and you have one year to complete your project.
Awesome, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good night.
You too. Uh, next up is seven-oh-one Summit Drive, applicant Eric Elwell.
All right, uh, applicant Eric Elwell, representing Agent Brian White, is requesting a side setback of three-point-nine feet, where fifteen is required in association with a recently constructed deck. This property is in the R-two single-family residential district, and, uh, you're up.
Good evening, my name is Brian White from McMahon Rule Associates. Thank you for your patience tonight and hearing our application. Uh, we are here tonight, uh, seeking approvals. This is our first step in compliance. Uh, there is an existing deck on the structure, which was constructed without permits. So we are, uh, pursuing the pathway for permitting for this structure. We're requesting a side setback variance of three-point-one feet, where fifteen is required by code. Have any of you had the opportunity to visit the property and see the deck?
I did.
So currently, I did provide a couple photos in our application. Uh, this deck, as it currently stands, is terraced in two different elevations. Uh, just wanted to clarify, we're here tonight seeking approvals on the upper portion of the deck. Another component of our approvals, we're working with the DEC, we're going to remove the lower portion of that deck. It's located in a coastal erosion hazard zone, so there's, uh, limited development within that area. So I just want to clarify, our request tonight is just for the upper portion of the deck. With that, um, this property, um, historically, I, we did provide a, a survey. When Eric purchased the property, there was an existing deck, but it was in disrepair. So that deck was removed, and this new deck was constructed. I'd like to point out, um, utilizing the previous survey map, that, uh, former deck, although there wasn't a tie distance specifically to the deck, there is a perimeter chain-link fence in place, and we're proposing to place this deck similar distance off the lot line. So we're proposing three-point-one feet. In perspective, the former tie distance to the fence on that property was three-point-two feet. So it's generally in the same location as what it was before with respect to the side lot line. This deck, as it exists today, is larger than what was historically there, but we're maintaining our buffer as it was previous to the side setback and also to the bay. It's not further to the bay than what it was historically. So with that, this is, again, our first step, uh, to seek these variances tonight, and this variance tonight. Uh, following that, we're going to pursue an EPod permit with the town. And then, you know, there's future plans here for this property, but we want to resolve this issue first and then move forward from there.
Erica, uh, actually, can you leave that?
Oh, yeah.
Up? So, um, for, th- this deck here, the new, the new deck is three-point-one feet off of the property line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, the previous deck, I think you said, was three-point-two feet off the property line?
The previous deck is within proximity to that. There wasn't a tie distance on the former survey map that was provided by another firm.
Okay.
But we do have a reference point of a chain-link fence, which was noted at three-point-two feet. So we're within...
Okay.
Inches of where it was before.
And that chain-link fence, so what is our distance from the chain-link fence to the new deck?
It, it's right up against the...
So the, the chain-link fence is the property line?
The chain-link fence is where our variance is, it's where the existing deck is. The property line, there's, um, a lift that goes down to the bay.
Yep.
So that is on the property line for perspective.
Is it on the other side of the fence? The lift?
That's, yes, it is. And that's shared with the neighbor to the north.
Sorry, I'm just, I saw it, I, I get, I'm just trying to understand the, the, the dimension. So the new deck is three-point-one feet off the property line?
Correct.
I understand the old deck, we didn't, there wasn't a, um...
Tie distance.
Tie, yeah. That was roughly three-point-two feet off of the chain-link fence. The chain-link fence is on the property line? That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand roughly, no?
The chain-link fence is three-point-two, three-point-one feet in from the property line.
That's correct.
And the deck is...
Okay. So then this deck here is...
Is up against the chain-link fence.
I got you, okay.
That's correct.
So, so looking at this, the north side is about three feet closer to the property line?
Looking at, at this, yes. The north side of the deck is three-point-one feet from the property line, placed in a very similar location within inches of the original deck.
Within inch, okay. That, that's what I was trying to get to, and, all right. The west side, how much further did the west, uh, edge of the deck expand roughly?
A- a- again, I don't have an exact distance because we didn't survey, but looking at, comparing the two maps together, it's generally on the same line. We are limited, there's a coastal erosion hazard area there.
I got you.
So I would say it has, and there's also a chain-link fence on the westerly boundary, which is very similar to the original survey map.
Okay.
So I would say for all intents and purposes, we haven't extended further towards the bay. On that regard, we have extended further south than what was originally there. Uh, but that's well within the limits of the property.
Very good.
Did you say the DEC is going to make you remove the lower deck?
That's correct, yes. It's in a, a, a regulated area.
Other questions from the Board? I'll make a, a similar comment to what I made before, uh, which I know you, I'm sure you're well aware of building without a permit. Obviously, uh, no, no. I appreciate, um, appreciate that the, um, owner is going to be removing the lower portion of the deck, and I can appreciate that ultimately, the new deck was put in the same spot, essentially, as the old deck. So I can appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. Nobody else on the Board, I'll open it up to the public. Uh, anybody want to speak for or against? Nope. Uh, I'll bring it back to the Board, any more comments from the Board? Nope.
No, sir.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for a type-two action under SEACER pursuant to NYCRR, section six-one-seven-point-five of the environmental code.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see. Please, my, my brain is not functioning right now.
All right. I will say that this request is not out of character with the neighborhood. If I stand on the deck and I look to the north, there's a similar platform. It's, it's along the bay, and platforms are placed there so that you can enjoy the views. There will be, not be a detriment created to nearby properties. With the deck that's remaining, it replaced a deck that is there, so there is no change to the detriment. There, there is no detriment because there's really no change in the fact that there was a deck there, there still is a deck there. Not achievable by any other method. Again, it is on the footprint of the existing deck. It goes a little bit further to the south, but it's well within the bounds of the property and won't impact the neighbor to the south. The request, in this instance, I will say, while it is substantial with respect to the side, side setback, it is no more substantial than the structure that was existing there. So in this case, I will say not substantial. And no adverse environmental or physical impacts to the site or to the neighborhood. Given that the additional deck, um, that is beyond this one is being removed, there is no longer any adverse physical or environmental impacts. The difficulty was self-created, and that you probably should have gotten a permit before you did it, but we're here now, we're going to fix it. Um, it's certainly not an undesirable change. The old deck that was there was aged and, and in need of repair, and this is a very nice-looking structure that certainly is an improvement from the original. Um, anything else to add or argue?
Nope.
All right, uh, with that, I will make a motion to grant an area variance for seven-oh-one Summit Drive to allow a north side setback of three-point-one feet, where fifteen feet is required, associated with a recently constructed deck on a point-nine-five acre parcel with SBL number zero-six-three, point-one-seven-dash-one-dash-thirty-one, located in an R-two single-family residential district under section three-five-zero-dash-eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
And I guess I would condition that the length of that setback is not going to encroach any closer to the bay than it is right now, so it's a nineteen-point-seven-foot length of the deck that is at the three-point-one feet.
Second.
Wait a minute, lost my paper. Mrs. Volo? Aye. Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Stampanato?
Aye.
All right, you have your approval, uh, your, uh, your area variance approval. Uh, you have one year to complete the project, um, building permit, does, does any...
I'll send you an email tomorrow with next steps.
Very good.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Do we have a timetable with respect to when the other deck needs to be removed? Or you guys will handle all of that as part of the finish of the, okay?
Town staff will take care of the following requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. We have, uh, two administrative matters?
One administrative matter, and then...
Where did approval go?
Minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yes, sorry. That would be administrative as well.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, you got it.
Yep.
Oh, 'cause it's right there.
So this, uh, the administrative matter this evening is for a one-year extension request of use variance, uh, number twenty-three ZB-zero-zero-three-three, uh, at one-zero-one-three Ridge Road, uh, also known as Splash Car Wash.
Was there a, a request for the planning board to extend this as well? Or just our board?
Just this board, I believe.
Yeah, um...
This is the third?
This would be the third, yes.
Third, yes. The planning board last year, uh, granted a one-year extension, but indicated that they, that would be the last from their perspective.
Yep.
And I believe this is still on litigation?
Yes.
That's my understanding. We do, we do have a representative here tonight that can speak to the current status if he would like to.
Good evening. Mike Montalto of Tosses Engineering, here on behalf of Charlie Fox and, and Anne Riley. Anne had a conflict, so she couldn't be here this evening. So asked us to attend, yes, you know, there is ongoing litigation. We are of the opinion, or we've been notified, that it should be coming up for a summary judgment motion, hopefully, uh, this fall. Continues to have some delays, it is ongoing litigation with, you know, associated with the purchaser of the property, however. Charlie Fox is trying to maintain or fulfill his obligations as the seller to provide the property with, you know, the use associated with it, especially since it's in litigation, so that he's not the party at default relative to his obligations for the parsonage. So, that, that, and yes, you know, we've had two extensions, uh, already. It was the area, the use variance was granted in August of twenty-twenty-two, two subsequent, uh, extensions.
So, your summary judgment can go on a long time. And just because the motions are going to be made in the fall, of course, there could be additional depositions, discovery produced. You got, um, the movement, you got a response, you got the judge's decision.
Yep.
And then ultimately, you end up with an appeal. So to say that it's imminent is, is probably not...
No, we're not saying it's imminent.
Not, not a fair characterization.
No, we, we, we didn't say it's imminent.
For the application of this board, it is not imminent.
Yeah.
Okay? So, from, from the applicant's viewpoint, in trying to handicap the likelihood that all things remaining equal, they would not be able to get this approved in the future, how do you see that? In other words, what circumstances would be changing if it wasn't extended? And so the variance goes away, and you had to come back before the Board again. I, I recognize inherently that, you know, anytime you go before the Board, you're rolling the dice, so nothing's a guarantee. But, but just objectively, i- is, is there the potential of, of, of change of facts that this Board would not more than likely grant the same variance?
No, I mean, there's no substantive change to the, to the application. You know, if you look at the burden of proof requirements relative to, you know, the, the use, there's no substantial change. You know, what, again, what we're trying to really accomplish with the extension is more from a contractual obligation.
Yeah.
You know, to demonstrate that we didn't just go, okay, use variance is gone, so that now the purchaser can look at their attorney and go, you didn't fulfill your obligation.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, and I think it's debatable whether this after the fact that the, uh, that the buyer would be able to do that. But then I think the Boards should look at the other side of the coin.
Yep.
So it's rare that we would extend this many times.
Fully understood.
To the town in doing so.
We're simply asking your consideration, we truly, we, we truly, we truly understand that this is the third, you know, that this is a, a third application, you know, a request for an extension, and...
I, I was, I was asking the Board to think about that.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Expecting to give an answer.
Well...
We're acknowledging that.
Nothing changes, the, the very, the use variance permits a car wash to be there, which is probably unlikely at this point in time, but, but that's what, that's what's permitted, and that's what we're continuing to extend, that nothing is changing, and that we would still permit that to be built there should the purchaser continue.
So the relevancy of the expiration is what? Is this, they've got to begin meaningful construction, not a use variance?
Right.
Right.
That's still required, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can we extend it for more than a year?
I don't know if there's any statutory that says that you can't, but I'm just, I would say, would anybody on the Board... would anybody on the board see prejudice to the town if the extension was to be granted? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, other than since, since this was granted, a car wash has been built within the, I think they're roughly right around the same time a new car wash has been built in the town, right, so I
So you think
Well, this one was granted after
Was it after?
The, the one over by Canada River Bank.
Jackson Road.
Yeah, this, this
Royal.
Right. It, it's changed ownership, but, but that one was built prior to this. The one on Empire Boulevard was built after this, but that's Penfield.
What about this? What about this? Applicant represented, how would you feel if the board granted the extension, however, upon sixty days' notice from the town, the town has the right to retract the extension upon notice to you giving you a right to be heard?
I don't follow that.
I don't understand, and then extending it indefinitely?
No.
Oh.
We're going to grant it for one year
Yep.
on the condition that upon sixty days' notice to the applicant, meaning you, giving you a right to be heard, the town, this board, the ZBA, reserves the right to terminate the extension. However, the extension can be for no greater than a year, which will require you to come back before the board again.
So you're saying that we could, the town could retract the extension three months from that?
Right, as long as we give the applicant sixty days' notice and give them an opportunity to be heard.
Right, okay.
As long as they have the, you know, with the opportunity to be heard.
Why would the town do that?
Why would the town grant?
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, because it's covering both bases, on the one hand, you're giving the applicant the benefit of the fact that there's been an approval, there's apparently been no change of circumstances and other than the town just not wanting to carry it that long, I haven't heard any other reason why we shouldn't grant it, right? On the other hand, because it's been so long, if something comes up, the town reserves the right to extract the extension, I'm not extract, rescind the extension, on sixty days' notice, the applicant has an opportunity to be heard to convince the board otherwise.
Okay, that would be, it would come back before this board?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any thoughts as to what that, what that trigger might be?
Well, I'm going to tell you something that they told me a long time ago in law school. When you win a case
Yep.
you want to get out of the courtroom as fast as you can. And you just won. You really want that question answered?
No.
All right. Is that agreeable with you?
Yeah, I believe with the clause that, with the sixty day notify, with the notification to us, certainly.
I, if the board agrees, you can move on that, I think it gives both sides something. And otherwise, you can just say no or you can say yes.
Discussion from the board?
Me? Makes sense, what you said, what you said, it covers both sides.
I mean, the owner's not doing anything more with the property at this point, if he was to come back, would we grant it if he had all the proper documentation? Probably. We have the comprehensive plan that is in swing right now, so, I mean, there, there is potential changes, I don't know what those may or may not be, but there, there are potential changes. I guess I, I don't see an issue with it, but at the same time, three times is, is a lot and, you know, I don't want to see it back here for a fourth extension, you know, or, you know, a fourth time, that much I can also say. I don't see any substantial changes coming down the pipe for this particular property as it is anyway, so I don't have an issue with it, but again, I don't want to see it again for another extension.
Agreed.
All right, I'm going to need you to write that down because I try and, try and restate what you said is going to be
So if someone was to make a motion, the motion would be to grant an extension of the approval for one year upon the condition that the town has the right to rescind the condition, I'm sorry, to rescind the extension upon sixty days, what did I say, ninety or sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty days' notice to the applicant allowing the applicant to have an opportunity to be heard parenthetically, meaning that we would place this on our docket, on our agenda with respect to the retraction of the, of the extension. In no event can the extension, is the extension longer than one year?
Should we, do we need to add no further extensions granted or?
I think that's, my sentence just does that. In no event is the extension to be longer than.
Okay.
All right, does someone mind to make a motion to exactly what John just said?
You wrote it down.
I scrawled it.
Do we need to do seeker for this? No?
No, because it's all done.
Okay.
All right, I'll give it a shot. All right, I will make a motion that this board will grant the extension of the use variance approval for one year from this, from this date, but the town reserves the right to terminate such extension with sixty days' notice, allowing the applicant to be heard with, with respect to the retraction of the extension and in no event is the extension to be longer than one year from this evening.
Second.
Who seconded it? Fight over it.
I did it.
All right, C V J S, sorry. Mrs. Volo? Aye. Mr. Spampanato?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
You have your one-year extension.
Perfect, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just so that we're clear, the notification relative to the rescission or retraction of the extension should go to whom?
Ann Riley. Ann made the application, I believe, right?
Ann?
Ann, Ann Riley, Riley.
Ann Riley, attorney?
Attorney of law, yeah.
And the alternative would be if for some reason she's not available?
Charlie Fox.
To Charlie Fox. Do you, you have an email for Mr. Fox?
We would have, we have.
We got it, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too, thank you.
Meeting minutes?
Please hold.
Need some elevator music?
Yes.
Got approval minutes, right?
All right, who first?
Before you do the meeting minutes, you know what, I think we should state on the record, I think we should, at least I would like to state on the record and recognize Catherine's long service and dedication to this board who
Yes.
who fulfilled this role, she did, she did a great job, she was always pleasant and, you know, served the town and the residents extremely well and I think she's a great loss
And I miss her already.
to the town, so we wish her well and thank her for all she did.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, who was here? I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the June tenth zoning board of appeals meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Find that to sign. And I will make a motion to approve the minutes to the July eighth, 2025 meeting. All those, let me make sure I have enough people. Yes, Anthony, I'll need you to vote for this as well, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right. Those are now approved, should be filed.
Okay. With that, make a motion to end our zoning board meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm not.
Do you, sir, do you need something?
No.
Okay.